Second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Five to one. Paul, if you'd read the addition.
To our policy agenda, we're substituting item four C. To our consent agenda, we're adding item five E, resolution authorizing the mayor and municipal clerk to execute the municipal compliance questionnaire. And to our routine agenda, we are adding a section one for the purchase of uniforms and boots for the police department.
Okay. Do we need to add anything about me being out of town at this point? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is approved. All right. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some representatives from the Gulf Coast Women's Center for Nonviolence. Let me ask and invite them to come up and so I can read this great, this proclamation. This is a great group and a great operation and we appreciate everything you've done, the dedication, things that you do. You know, a lot of things you can't talk about, but you do it in a great way. So, we'll take, our crack photographer will do a portrait here. But let me read this proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a public health crisis that can affect anyone, men and women, all ages, orientations, ethnic and religious backgrounds, and people in all socioeconomic and educational levels. Whereas the Gulf Coast Women's Center for Nonviolence provided emergency shelter and support services for over, almost 2,500 victims of violence and received over 15,000 calls to its crisis hotline in 2017, reflecting the severity of the problem within the six coastal counties of Mississippi. Whereas advocates, professionals, volunteers, and community members will devote the month of October to raising public awareness of the crisis of domestic violence. It causes, its causes, affects intervention and prevention. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo-Gilich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, thank you very much. Would you like to take a picture first now, please?
We just want to say thank you to the City of Biloxi for the support that you've given us for the last forty-plus years we've been in this area, providing services to domestic violence victims and sexual assault victims, to Chief Miller for the support you've given us for years, Assistant Chief Wills, the mayor, and the council for the service you've given us and the support you've provided us. So, thank you so much for what you do for us.
Thank you again. We're really proud of the work you've done and the dedications you have and your staff has. So, thank you very much. There's a birthday, a couple of birthdays I'd like to recognize. Of course, our city attorney, I think. I'm not sure how old he is. But it's also my middle daughter's birthday, so anyway, I'm not going to tell you how old she is. And Billy Ray too. Where's Billy Ray? Anyway, great day, great day. The only thing I'd like to comment on is, in the mayor's report, is this opportunity to move forward on the $14 million indication or intent to offer these bonds. I think we'll have Peter as well as Jane to talk about the specifics of what we're, this process that's beginning. Again, we're not asking you to vote on any specific project, but there are $14 million of stuff that can be done. There's stacks of this and stacks of that. And, you know, I think with this process beginning, it'll take nine to 10 weeks before, I guess, end of June, end of January of 2019 is where we could actually start the projects. And that put us pretty far into fiscal year. So, at this point, we're saying, hey, you gotta get to start these things sooner than later, because if you push it further on down, you're going to waste economic value of that money. And it's, everything's on the rise, not on the decline. So, we're asking your support and consideration for this intent. Peter, would you like to add anything to that? Or there are questions we could answer specifically, you know, both on where we are debt-wise. And again, you've already allocated the millage to service this debt in the 2019 budget. So, we're ready to go and implement the projects that you would be asked, one by one, all, in all, $14 million of things to move forward with. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Any departmental reports? We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we had a five-in-day parade Saturday. And I think, I don't know, how'd y'all do it? Fill the boot? So, that's a good, you know, that's a good thing to support the MDA. That's always a good thing. The parade, you know, was fine. They went down to the old fire station. Even with all the bad holes in the street and, you know, all that construction work you're doing and tearing everything up. But I tell you, everybody was there. They had a nice crowd. Everybody enjoyed the hot dogs and hamburgers. So, it turned out to be a good thing. So, we gotta keep that going, chief, until the running day's gonna get big and big like it used to be. But you can't go back to where it was. Those are different times. And as far as buying, Mayor, we had a long discussion that that's the budget here. We left the millage in there, but we wasn't in agreement on any $14 million. So, a lot of work needs to be done before we pass anything like that. That's just my point of view on that. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
Okay. First of all, thank you, Mayor, for meeting with some of our leaders this morning. So, I appreciate that. Division Street is coming along pretty good. I'm looking at some of the sidewalks being done, which is vitally important. Our mother sorrow was taken care of. I don't see Walt here. So, I'll defer, I'll probably hold some questions until next month when he comes back. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Newman?
Yeah, I just want to thank Park and Rec, Sherri Bell and her crew, and Friends of Hiller Park for another great turnout for the Halloween in Hiller Park.
Okay. Thank you. No report?
No report.
No report, Mr.? Okay. The only thing I want to mention is also on this $14 million bond, I've looked through some of the detail. There are some projects here that I would certainly support, and I'm just going to name four of them that I'm looking at. I think the other councilmen and councilpersons need to kind of weigh in on their projects, proposed projects in their wards. But the municipal infrastructure repairs and paving, I think we did discuss that during our workshops. I don't know if this is the right amount, but certainly we need an amount for municipal repairs and paving projects. The fire station number 10 contingency, it seems like a reasonable amount, $100,000. The Elsie Street extension, and this is the road that goes alongside the new Walmart that we need to connect to Medical Parkway and over by the new Santa Maria Retirement Home. It's imperative that we make that connection. And certainly the Cedar Lake Bridge repairs, which is an 80/20 split, and I think the recommended amount here is 100,000. So, I just want to, for the record, I would support those projects, but I'd have to defer to the council members on these other projects in their ward what kind of support there is. And that concludes my report. Mr. Barrett is out of the room, but we'll give him courtesy if he comes in and he wants to give any kind of report. Let's move on to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each citizen, if you would raise your hand, you'll be recognized. Come to the front of the room and have a seat. Record your name and address on the document on the table and state your name clearly and your address so the clerk can record it. So, we'll begin on this side of the room. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak on this side of the room? There being no one, we'll move to this side of the room. Anyone would like to come up and speak? Anyone in the back of the room? Vince, you want to come up and say anything? Okay, all right. All right, citizens' comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda.
Ordinance to amend section 2335B sixth of the Code of Ordinances to remove Biloxi landmark designation from destroyed structures. Excuse me, structures.
Okay. And who moved it last time?
I did.
All right, Mr. Lawrence?
I think Billy Ray wants to come up and explain. I think there's this old building, either they're gone, are they going to be tore down? The structure is not, really not going to be there anymore, correct?
No, those structures are all gone. There's two of them on Howard Avenue, the Hutters, Mr. Hutters Bookstore and the building next door were two of them. They're destroyed, so we need to take them off. There's one on Lemieux Street that was destroyed by fire. And I think there was another one that was actually destroyed by the Katrina, but it was never taken off the list. So, we're just trying to clean up the list to make sure it's correct, what's out there
I agree with him. That's good. That's why we wanted to explain it to y'all. It's just laundry time, cleaning them up, daddy washing them.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, 124 Lemieux Street, is that destroyed as well?
That's the old Biloxi Library across the street. That was a landmark building.
Okay, because the 124 is the street address for the old library?
No, that was 124 over there, I think. It may be confusing. Oh, 127, yeah. 24, well, I'll check. That, it's probably just a typo on the thing, but we'll fix it.
So, what we really need to know is what's the address of the one across the street?
If it's 124, that is a typographical error. That shouldn't be there.
Then we would have to know the correct address, though.
No, we didn't. We just need to amend it to take that number off the agenda.
Okay, because I don't, I don't know that we want to remove the historical designation.
No, we do not.
So, that was?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we mean the one west of City Hall here?
There was a map error and we're trying, we had to fix the map error and I think this one. Where 140? Yeah, 124 is the old library, so that was a mistake. There's a, there was a map error. We're trying to correct at the same time. We're trying to get the city, the online map to match what's actually really in the ordinance and to make sure the ordinance is correct with what's on the street.
All right, so we're not talking about the old library?
No, but if it does say 124, we do need to amend it so that we just take that number out.
I would, yeah, so can, I'll move that we amend this to remove 124 and to add whatever the address is for the library that was across the street from City Hall.
All right, we have a proposed amendment. Do we have a second?
Move.
Second. Move by Mr. Lawrence. Any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Any other discussion on the ordinance? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor as amended? Those opposed?
Excuse me, resolution authorizing the acceptance of Harrison County levy of one mil of ad valorem taxes for debt service.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
This, the first $5,000,000 we was receiving, so we'll be receiving a million and a half. Is this going to be yearly? All right, well, the only thing I want to say, I don't like all the stuff about development of, what you need to spend this money on inside them harbors. Dig them out, fix them up, the stuff we need to do. I don't want to do broad walks. I don't want to do all this stuff like that. So, I don't know what we have to do to make sure it reads that way, because this money needs to be built, spent in the harbors. That's what we did it under the port bond for. Right, so it's going to be spent, not outside the harbors, not down the street, no, inside the harbors. There's a lot of work needs to be done in these harbors, upgrade them. And that's what we need to spend the money on.
It's going to be spent in the territory and of the port authority, the port division. They own a lot of property in a lot of places. So, it's allocated to be used as if it were the port authority. So, that's what we're, and it requires there are restrictions to be in the port enterprise, and that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but I want to make sure that's where this money's going to be spent.
This is to get it, this is to transfer the money from the county into the Port Enterprise Fund.
Right.
It doesn't direct anywhere. Anything coming after the Port Enterprise is a separate issue.
When I say, we did this for a reason, and I'm glad we got the money. But the money needs to be spent inside these harbors. All these harbors needs a lot of work, every one of them. The port deputy needs a lot of work, need to make some slip water, dig it out. There's a lot of work needs to be done. Me and half a year, that's good money. I just want to make sure we're not directing this money some off-the-wall project down the street. Take care of the harbors.
It's being directed to the bank account of the enterprise, of the port and enterprise fund. That's where it's being directed to.
Yeah, but I want this council to be abreast of what's going on. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying. I have no problem, and we need the money. They've been owning this money a long time. I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that we spend this money correctly in the harbors. That's all.
It's an all-time capital budget. You would be asked to confirm whether or not we're, with this proposal, it should be related to the port operating, five years or five. And, you know, for the, for that, for all the time, we might not have to spend, and you're everything in one year. But we're actually, you know, have some commitments in the calendar. Well, I'm not sure exactly where that bill will come from. The amount of that year will be, we don't know what, it's the end of Harrison County Supervise, that's making that whole bill towards the port operator.
And I mean, you know yourself that with this bill for this term, it's getting bigger. One of the biggest problems is the depth. I mean, the water has, that has to be dug out. I mean, that's one of the first things that needs to be done. Then the next thing, you're going to have to make bigger slips. These boats are getting bigger and bigger. So, those are, that's all I'm saying. I think it's great we're getting the money. I just want to make sure it's spent on the things we need immediately to enhance the harvest.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tisdale, any comment?
Excuse me, I have nothing to add.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Guines, any comment? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme? Mr. Barrett? Okay. All in favor? Opposed?
Resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and city council to issue general obligation public improvement bonds for the maximum principal amount of $14 million.
Do we have a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Mr. Guines. Mr. Barrett?
I have several things. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm not opposed to a bond. However, in the, in our budget talks, I had requested a list of all the bonds that we currently have on the book, when they're going to be retired, all those things, and have never received any of those. So, I would like to see those, to see where we're at, when, when those, you know, when we will pay those off. Secondly, I'm not opposed to a bond, however, I am opposed to some of the projects that are listed on this list, because I don't believe if we're going to borrow money, that we need to borrow money to do projects that aren't necessities for the citizens. Put ourselves into debt for things that aren't necessary for the citizens. I think the only way that we should borrow money is if it's to, to borrow it for things to better the infrastructure and things for our residents, not to do things that are amenities, not needs. And so, that's, that's all I would like to say and whoever else. While I'm not opposed to the bond, I do have some issues with some of the things listed, and I would like to see a list of all the current bonds and when those will be paid off.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I'm kind of like Mr. Barrett. I'm not opposed to the bond. However, I would like to get a general idea of some of the things that we want to do. I looked, I looked at some of the things that we put on the list. And of course, everyone know I have an area that's been devastated and still devastated. And even in that area, we can still use something over there. And I didn't see anything on there that pertained to that. So, I would like to just hold it off a week, talk with the administration and see if we can come up with some definite things. I need a few things that are definite on there. So, I just feel like we need to just talk a little bit before we move forward on it.
Mr. Guines, would you consider possible a workshop on this?
Possible workshop, or at least delaying it a week. I don't know if we workshop or we come in or we do a three-three meeting or something like that.
Okay, Mr. Barrett had one?
I do have one question. On this Wool Market drainage, east and west, that's listed, can you, I know what the east is, what is the west? And the 3.5 million, and I know Mr. Overstreets in the room and he might be able to help us or Christie. I was under the impression, and maybe this is just for the east, that we were looking around $2 million.
A million and a half. There's $35 million worth of projects that's listed in the master plan. If we can't do $35 million worth of projects, then we could start with the 3.5. And so, I mean, you know, we can talk to this. Again, this is the intent to do $14 million worth of work. Work for the people, projects that are worthy of doing this. We've got the allocation set up, you know, in the budget to actually handle the debt service related to what we can do. It's going to be up to you to say of this, we just listed $14 million worth of stuff. Y'all dictate exactly how it's to be implemented and, of course, it takes. So, it's the intent. It's not the details is what I, you know, I hope, kind of answering this question. And up to $14 million, you know? And again, my point is, this is a beginning of the process, not the end of the process. We get a lot of input, and I would not mind doing a workshop. We may need a special meeting anyhow next week for another, for another situation that we would need consideration. And an hour or so before that, an input between now and then with regard to some of the things, you know, almost like the paving bond. You know, we actually have a plan for the paving part of this, you know, based on the science that we've, you know, the surveys that were taken. So, that's sort of cut and dry. You know, this is where you should put that money. How much it is, you know, we can do, you know, $10 million worth of that. You know, based on the conditions that, you know, that study said, this is where you better put your money. So, what we juggle out of that $14 million is up to y'all. And again, the workshop is not a bad idea if, you know, next week we can, especially if it's going to be a special call meeting for, yeah, that sort of thing. We could actually accomplish your input on the stuff that we just threw $14 million worth of stuff at you.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not opposed to it. I just, you know, I would like to see those, those bonds that we currently have on the books when they're coming off.
I think it totals a 14, 42 points, million, 40, yeah, okay, Ken.
Real quick, real quickly, we'll run through the current balance of our existing general obligation bonds. They total how much, Ken? 42 million?
42,885,000 is what we have outstanding at the end of September 30th, 2018. So, and what that, what makes that up is, and I'm just going to go through a list here. I don't have them on a piece of paper that I could hand out to you, but if you want to write it down, you're welcome to do that. It's made up of the 2017 bond issue, 6,635,000. The 2011, which was a refunding issue, 2,810,000.
When are those due? Can you tell us the due dates as you read them off?
Yes, 2017 pays out, final payout 2032. 2011, final payout 2023. 2012, which we owe 3,965,000 on, last payout 2027. 2014A, 10,000, 10,850,000. Last payment is 2029. 2014B, 18,625,000. Last payment, 2034.
Those are the ballparks.
Those are the ballparks, those last two?
Well, no, the last one, the one before that's actually the 2014 paving bond issue.
The 10 million?
It was actually 14 million.
Is it remaining?
Oh, the balance, yeah, 10,850,000.
And if we took the 14 or the 10, whatever we take, when would we have to start paying on that one?
2020.
On which, oh, 2020.
The one that we're talking about now?
Yeah, they're talking about 2020.
Okay.
Yeah, year from next, I don't know.
Okay, and Mike, you were going to explain the east and west?
I didn't want to have to go in the weeds, but there was a Wool Market drainage, east and west, and we combined them into a single project. East, they were divided east and west geographically, because it made more sense than dividing north and south, so, because of the way the water runs. And we just rolled them onto that sheet as one project. We worked most of this year, a lot of that money got moved into the Wool Market water project, because it was ready to go and this one wasn't, as you know. So, our DE has been working on permitting on the Wool Market east. More than likely, we'd put that out in two separate bids, east and then west, because we're further along on the east.
Are both of those on Wool Market Road? Is that just on each end of that road or? Okay, all right, that's all I have.
I just have one question on the lines of what, where Mr. Barrett was going. Can you, Ken, I know you're not a bond expert per se, but
But we got some.
Bond rates, bond rates, are they moving up? Are they projected to increase? Or are they remaining fairly stable?
Like all debt, they're moving up, but right now, we've, we're going to be able to get some pretty good rates.
So, if it moves up a half point or a point, what does that mean on $10 million? Can anybody answer that question?
Want to try that? We don't know.
Yeah, yeah. 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 It's going to cost you more.
I thought I was going to move.
Maybe if we do move to a workshop, if the council does call for a workshop, we will have more information as we discuss.
I'll make a motion to table it for a week.
Whoa.
Just table it. Subject call. Subject call.
Okay, there is a motion to table, but before we get to that, does anybody have any other discussion?
Well, yeah, but there's a lot too, but we're going to table it and have a workshop. We can have all the discussions then.
There's a proposed motion to table it, but I was going to, before we got to that decision, does anybody want to make a comment before we decide to table it or not? Lawrence, you want to make a comment?
I have no problem with a table and subject to call. Everybody get their act together, see what they want to do. And it's, we don't need to be in debt 14 million maybe. Maybe do 7 million. That's up to us. And we don't need any more debt. You've got 42 million on this bond, but you've still got another 40 million on other bonds you're paying, right?
Do you need a Pops Ferry Bridge? Do you need a Pops Ferry Bridge?
You ain't got enough money. Don't even go there. Don't even waste your time.
Do you need a Sierra Lake Bridge?
Yeah, you ain't got 120 million, and you ain't got 24 million to put up. Come on.
Anyone else have any comments?
That's nothing to do with this bond.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, just an observation, right now, if I understood, Ken, there's, there you are, Ken, we have 42 million in outstanding debt, and when you were rattling off the dates when those, those bonds, different bonds would be paid off, I didn't hear any mention that would be paid off at the end of this year, fiscal year, the end of next fiscal year.
2023 is the quickest one.
Right, I believe 2023 was the...
2023 closes.
What's happening, which, what's happening that they're factoring in to the decision to do this bond issue is, one of the bond issues, that 2011 was a refunding issue. And so, you had two or three bond issues that it was replacing, and there was some kind of, there was a staggered length of time, and part of that bond issue gets paid off in 2020. But the bond issue still goes on, but for a lot lesser amount.
Right, do you know what that difference is, how much it drops roughly?
I think total with principal and interest is 800 something thousand dollars.
For the year?
For the year.
Okay. Just to make an observation, we want to borrow $14 million. We have an idea of what we want to spend it on, but we don't know exactly what we want to spend it on. And we might spend all of that $14 million, or may not. There's certainly $35 million worth of stuff to do. I think a workshop would be terrific. Uh, I think a, a workshop would be terrific, just so we can nail down exactly what we want to do, and let, let me give you this example. We had a, a similar resolution for a 7 million dollar bond issue. And, uh, we talked about building a fire station, indeed, we're building two fire stations, which is fine. But one of those is built with certificates of participation, which doesn't count against your debt limit, doesn't affect your debt ratio. If I understand this correctly, to fix the Cedar Lake Bridge, because what's listed here is 100,000, is, is our portion of that our match? So it'd cost half a million dollars to fix that bridge. And I had hoped that we would fix the bridge, so trucks could get across it, and that we wouldn't need the fire station tent at the time. But, that, that, when I voted for these improvements, and I want to note that everything that's listed here, these are proposed projects. That's why I prefer that we nail them down, and know exactly what we're gonna be working on, and, and prioritize those. Rather than just, hey, we can borrow 14 million, let's go out, let's borrow it, we'll decide what we want to spend it on later. Now, the time issue, I don't know if it's a quarter percent, 50 thou, whatever it is, it's something. But honestly, we hear that whenever we talk about bonds, we have to act now. That's all I'll say. I think a workshop is terrific, and we nail down what we want to do.
Mr. Demming?
I'm right in line with, with, uh, Mr. Tisdale. I know the mayor said it's the intent today, it's not about the details. But I think that leads us down a very dark path. We've seen numerous bonds with previous administrations that have gone the way of the dodo bird when it comes to the planning. I think 2 million dollars per ward in, in paving, and those projects were spent, that money was spent on whatever came up for the administration. And I know my ward suffered, and numerous other wards suffered, at the will of the administration. So I would, um, I would prefer to nail down exactly what we're looking at doing with this 14 million. Now, with regard to the intent, and costing us money by time, if we pass the intent today, what's the next step with obligating the city of Biloxi?
I think if it's passed today, the intent, or next Tuesday, or the week after that, we'd be looking to get these bond quotes, the interest rates, probably in early December to mid-December. They would be, uh, shopped out among different banks, and the funding would take place in January, sometime, so we would delay the interest. So delaying a week or two is, is not gonna affect, uh, the interest rate.
Okay, that answers my question.
I would say delaying six months or so would, so. I think rates, the Fed has had two or three small moves in the last six to eight months, and they're projecting another one in January, maybe early next year, so we'd want to get in before that.
So a week or two won't, a week or two won't hurt us to nail some stuff.
Unless there's some major, unless there's some major meltdown, but no, shouldn't.
I, in lieu of that, um, Councilman Lawrence, I would ask that you amend your motion to put this on the agenda for the first meeting of November. And we call for a workshop next week on the 5th Tuesday.
I, I have no problem amending it, but I'm not putting this, this here on there. That's what we're having a workshop for, to put together what we want. So I don't need to do this. See, I just think we just had, need to have, because you're gonna, you're talking about, uh, 14 million? You're talking about 800,000, 900,000 you're putting into debt service?
Why don't we just?
But I mean, I'm not putting this on, because this is not what we want.
So why don't we just take this off the table, let this one die, and allow the administration to bring back a resolution in two weeks, based off of what we, we, uh?
I have no problem, but my thing is, each one of y'all needs to figure out what you want to do. Not what they want to do, they're bringing this to us. Some of the things are good, some we don't want to do. So let's put together what we need to do as a council, with the mayor. That's how it works, the mayor and us work together.
The chair recognizes, it seems, the, uh, council, uh, doesn't have a desire to move forward today with this, uh, uh, resolution. It seems like a workshop, sounds like the logical choice, has been, uh, proposed by several members. And, uh, whether we adopt this, uh, eventually adopt this motion, or there's a revised version, remains to be seen. I want to allow Mr. Barrett, uh, to make a comment.
I ha, I have one more question for Ken. That bond that's gonna be retired in 2023, do you know what the original amount of that bond was?
To answer your question, uh, I don't think I have that, I may have that in here. But that's the one I just spoke to that tied about two or three bond issues together, and it refunded or refinanced it. That's the one that also is paying out to the tune of 8, 900,000 next year.
All right, so these, these numbers that you gave us, can you do us a printout, um, on, you know, the, what we owe, what the original amount was, and when they're gonna be paid off? Of, as far as what we have on the books currently?
For next week?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Are we gonna do a workshop for next Tuesday?
We're, we're gonna talk about that in just a minute.
One more question.
Mr. President, let me ask, uh, one thing, you know, for the workshop, uh, you know, I would, you know, timing is everything. So I would ask you collectively, or individually, to get those kinds of projects, whether it's paving, whether it's infrastructure repair, whether it's drainage, what, the, the, uh, you know, the, the infrastructure, things that you need within your ward. I, I want to list, I mean, we could borrow 28 million dollars and still service it. There are a lot of things to do, 35 million dollars sitting right here. So without, I don't, you know, this 45 minutes in this discussion needs to be planned for this, this next go-around. So I would ask individually, what is on your mind, and what we can do to assemble this? Maybe less than that, maybe more than that, and maybe scheduling another bond, because things will be happening between now and then. So there's a lot of things to do, the longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost, so, that's what I would ask, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Tisdale, you have a comment?
I do, I do.
All right, no comment, Mr. Gons?
Yeah, uh, well, I did, I initially, I, I moved to table it, uh, but we ended up discussing it anyway. So if we're gonna discuss it, you know, then, then we might as well move forward with it. Uh, the, the reason I asked to table it is so we can have a workshop, or something next Tuesday.
We're gonna have a workshop. Huh? I said we're gonna have a workshop.
Have a workshop next Tuesday, and that was the original thing, so we can go ahead and discuss what we need to discuss, subject to call. And then if we're satisfied, we can put it on in November. So I just wanted to point that out. So if we're gonna continue to discuss it, then we need to go ahead and solve it today.
Well, I, I appreciate the discussion, there's seven council members, and some may want to, uh, comment on what was put on the agenda today before we table it, or call for a workshop. Uh, Mr. Lawrence, I'll allow you, you have any other discussion? I do want to make a comment, after all my colleagues have had their chance to weigh in on what their thoughts and opinions are.
I, I think if everybody's in agreement that we definitely need a workshop, we need to look at what we need, and you're right, we need to find what we need to put on this thing, and take off, and that's the idea of the workshop. So I have no problem with that. Now, we need to borrow 14 million, that's debatable. How much debt can you resolve? We can resolve more, because you got another 40 million, we paying too, right? Not just this 40 million, you're paying another 40 million. You got 80 something million in, in bonds.
Yeah, there's, there's stiff bonds out there.
You can call them what you want, it's still a note. But anyway, I, I'm like you, what Felix said, just call for the workshop, let's do that.
Okay, and before we wrap this up, I just want to make a few comments myself. You know, there, there's a proposal to spend some money on capital projects to improve, uh, certain areas of the city of Biloxi. And, uh, that's great that the administrator's keeping their eye on the ball. We're in a position, as we heard in our budget workshops, that we're in a really good position with our borrowing power. We're in a really good position, a lot of municipalities are not in the, the position that the city of Biloxi is in. And, uh, but 14 million is no chump change. And, uh, so this council obviously wants to move forward and get the biggest bang for our buck if we're gonna obligate ourselves for 15 or 20 years. With whatever level it is, whether it's 6 million, or 14 million, or, or otherwise. I want to thank the council, uh, for its prudence in recommending, uh, that we do a workshop. And, uh, the chair will now entertain the details of that. Uh, Mr. Gons, you made a motion to table it. Uh, Mr. Lawrence had suggested a workshop, among others, Mr. Demming. Uh, what is the will of this council? Do we want to table this, and then charge, and, and then schedule that next Tuesday, uh, workshop? Is that the will of the council?
There's still a motion on the table, where I, uh, motion to table.
All right, there is a motion on the table by Mr. Gons to table, uh, this resolution for one week, is there a second? Uh, subject to call, excuse me.
Subject to call.
Subject to call, thank you.
With the workshop Tuesday.
Uh, with a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday, is that clear? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Newman, any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? The motion carries. Move on to the, uh, consent agenda?
The workshop would be when, what time?
Tuesday at 1:30. Tuesday at 1:30.
So you're gonna have a workshop after that?
No, there's no meeting next week. It's the 5th Tuesday.
Halloween.
5th Tuesday. It's a free one.
Oh, it's a free day?
Yeah.
We gotta come up here again?
All right, 1:30 next Tuesday. Uh, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Mr. Gons, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, uh, discussion, Mr. Gons.
Uh, I think everything's okay in my eyes.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, a couple of things on, uh, we added something to the agenda, this, the annual city compliance questionnaire. My only question would be that all the questions have been answered accurately? I mean, we don't know, we're approving it, we don't know, you, the administration did all this, but can just somebody assure me that all those questions have been answered accurately?
Yes, I mean, the mayor has to sign it, not you, so.
That's good, that's all right. But, but we're, but we're approving it today.
Yes.
Okay. On item B, I had spoken with Chief Boni about this, um, they're, they're looking to apply for grant monies to upgrade, what's basically a required upgrade in, uh, communication systems, more or less. And the local match on that is 36.3. And that comes out of the general fund, is, that's correct, I understood that correctly? Right, would if, if, in fact, they get the grant. Gotcha, okay, I just wanted to be sure everybody understood that. On, uh, on the item A, uh, we're three weeks into the fiscal year, and we're allocating additional funding for legal expenses. And I understand that these are unanticipated legal expenses, it says incurred in relation to the infrastructure project that are unallowable under the grant. That's basically FEMA disallowed them, correct? No, who disallowed them?
No, the, these are, okay, they're, they're not legal fees, they're legal expenses for, uh, an expert that's handling scheduling, uh, to deal with Oscarinda's scheduling. So it is a, uh, more of a litigation, uh, construction expert witness type review. And he's been doing it for a number of months, but, um, uh, there was no funding in the, uh, remaining legal expenses, so we are trying to get that funded now.
There are no funding for the legal expenses?
For the, for Oscarinda litigation. We talked about that a little bit in the, uh, in the budget.
Okay, so, so we're, how much are we talking about?
You're talking about 62,000 dollars for that?
All right, so 62,000 dollars, and I'm thinking, why just, can't we move it out, rather than the general fund, move, move it from another legal budget into this legal budget? And if that legal budget is running short on funds in July, we could look at moving money then.
Well, my, my administrator, I didn't start the year with 62,000 in legal expenses, or anything like that.
How much money do, how much money do we have, uh, allocated or budgeted for legal expenses in the city?
Probably 30,000, and we, we use that on things like closings, and surveys, and appraisals, and things like that.
How much did we spend in legal expenses this past year?
Well, I had Grace Aaron under the legal expenses, so we had, um, if you don't count prosecutor, or public defender, purely legal expenses. If you back Grace out, it was probably about 40,000 dollars.
That's all we spent on legal expenses in the city last year, was 40,000 dollars?
Not, not legal fees, legal expenses.
All right, talk with me about legal fees then.
There you go.
So how much did we spend in legal fees last year? Did it top a million? Eight hundred thousand?
700, 800.
700, so why can't we, and how much do we have budgeted for legal fees this year?
50,000 less than last year.
All right, so let's say it's 700,000, to pick a number, why can't we move 63,000 out of that legal fees into this, uh, to cover this unantic, unanticipated legal expense? I mean, you see where I'm going with this, why take it out of the general fund? We're two weeks into the year, take it out of legal, later in the, in the, in the, this fiscal year, if there's an issue, we can move it out of the general fund into legal.
We could just cancel any review of any Oscarinda litigation, and just see what happens. I mean, he's not a lawyer, he shouldn't be paid as a legal fee, it's a legal expense. And he, he's a potential witness, or a potential expert witness to help us in reviewing that claim.
Well, and I guess we could do that, but I don't think we want to do that, and I'm not insinuating that you should do that, I'm just.
Mr. Demming wants some cross-examination here.
I'm just thinking, well, I'm not tendering the witness yet. But, but my point is, rather than take it out of the general fund, take it out of either legal fe, legal fees then, move it from there. We can always come back later if the legal fees fund is short, and take it out of the general fund. And it may be six of one, a half a dozen the other. I mean, I know, I know we've got a, I mean, it's, I think it's a wise 62,000 dollar investment, I'm just questioning where it's coming from at this point in time.
Mr. Tisdale, you want to make an amendment to the?
No, I'm curious to see what the rest of the discussion yields.
Okay, all right. We'll move on, Mr. Lawrence?
I agree with, uh, Paul on that. Walt wrote it, was it, is he playing this thing at all?
This is none of his fees.
That do with him?
No.
Okay, we're paying them a lot of money too, so, so who's actually handling this, first?
This is one of our construction lawyers, that are being paid from the legal budget, and this is an expert that's been retained. And to go any farther, I'd want to go into executive session, talking about prospective litigation. I'm not, I'm not gonna lay out what he's doing, anything like that.
You don't need to get, but this actually costs just this one thing, is 62,000?
Well, it, it's over about a six-month period, six to eight-month period.
I agree with Paul, I think we ought to just take it out of what we have already, then we'll go towards later in the year, so, that's just my take, thank you.
Ms. Newman? Any, any of this, or any of the other items on the consent, Mr. Demming?
I think, I think Paul cleared up the one comment I wanted to make, but I do agree with him that, that, uh, I think we should move it out of the legal budget, and then replenish that budget if our legal fees are diminished.
Okay, Mr. Barrett, any comment? Mr. Gons, any comment?
No, I'm o, I'm okay with it there, I mean, it's gotta be done either way it go, so it didn't really, in my opinion, it doesn't really matter. Like I said, well, we're talking about Oscarinda and possible litigation, so we need to kind of be attuned to what we're dealing with at this point. And especially when something such as a sensitive issue like that, we need to go ahead and move forward on things like that. Because like I say, we've been suffering enough over there, and, and, uh, possibility of, uh, taking care of that right away is, uh, paramount.
Let me, let me ask a question, you know, we're directing Ken to make a budget entry from legal fees to legal services, and then pay this bill, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, well, it hasn't officially been done yet, but.
Right, and, and, and I'll offer that amendment at this time.
All right, Mr. Tisdale, uh, seconded by Mr. Demming, is there any discussion on the amendment? Everybody understand what they're voting on?
Uh, are you, just to be clear, what you guys want them to do is take it out of the legal budget?
Right, the, we're taking it out of the legal, the legal fees into the legal expenses, right? We're doing that transfer.
Now, are we gonna make a transfer out of the general fund into the legal budget?
No.
Or you're just saying, take it out of there?
The legal fees to the legal expenses.
Use that up, and then when it's used up, then we come back. But we still gotta pay that bill regardless, right? I mean, I don't see the point.
We're just not increasing the, the legal at this point, because maybe we don't need to increase it later on down in the end of the year. Okay, clear? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six.
Motion carries six-one. That was item number C, oh, I'm sorry.
Five A.
A.
A. Item number A. Six-one, Gines in opposition. Okay? Anyone else have anything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I want to go back to what, uh, we were talking about the audit. And I, we sent in, uh, sent in two or three things. Did they change the mistakes that was made that I showed you? Did they change the mistake they made in the book itself? When they wrote up the wrong date, the wrong years? I mean, we proven, I think that was the problem they had with that audit we got. They had several mistakes in there. Showed them what they were, the chart was one, the years was wrong, the date changed those things. I'm not gonna accept that audit if they accepted it without changing it.
With all due respect, Mr. Lawrence, we're on the consent agenda, where is that item on the consent agenda we're discussing?
I don't know, they, they, that's what they put on.
Okay.
That's what they put the audit on there.
I, I don't see that item on the consent agenda, if you can point that out.
Lucy, did they not add that to compliance? Right, the audit compliance? The compliance about an audit, that's what it states.
Alright, five E, is that what you're talking about?
I guess so, whatever it is. That's all I'm saying, I was just gonna make sure everything was corrected.
Where is five E?
I want it to be in compliance.
That's the Parks and Recreation, so are you talking about the resolution for Parks and Recreation, item five E? Okay, oh, it's a missed title. Alright, go ahead, continue, Mr. Lawrence, go ahead.
Say it again.
Go ahead and continue your question or comment.
I would just, I thought all it had to do with the audit, accepting audit as it was changed. And as compliance, don't you have to list that you accepted the audit? And that part of this?
A lot of different questions, it, it says, was it published? Did you do a budget? Did you do it? I don't, I don't know if there's a question that says, did you have any typos in it or not? I mean, these are all basically required by statute, certain things you have to do. And, uh, so I mean, that level of detail, did, did anyone make a mistake that had to be corrected? That's not really one of these questions.
That's why I was just trying to find out if that's had anything to do with this. Want to make sure we accepted anything, make sure it's correct. That was, that was my point. I was talking about the audit as we accepted the audit, I didn't know if that was part of this, that's all I was asking you. If it is, then I want to make sure it's corrected. If it's not, then just vote it in. I mean, like you said, some of the stuff you have to do, these things you have to do.
So are you satisfied, uh, council, are you satisfied that it's, uh, accurate and not misleading or? Yeah? I wasn't talking to Mr. Demming, I was talking to you. Counsel, not councilmen. Are, are you satisfied we're okay, we're on, we're on good ground with this? Okay, is that a, Mr. Lawrence, are you satisfied with his answer?
Okay, well, that's just accepted, if I found a problem, I'll take it, we'll take it up next week.
Okay. Alright, anyone else on the consent agenda? Any topics? All in favor, and I'll get the exceptions afterwards, all in favor of the consent agenda? Those opposed? Now the exceptions, Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Mr. Gines? A.
A.
Alright. You got A, A for Mr. Gines?
Maybe I already voted against that one.
Nay on A. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale? Mr. Barrett's out of the room, and I have none. Alright, we'll move on to the code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel, begin when you're ready.
Case A on the agenda, Cam Am Properties, one-six-six-four Pringle Circle, that case has been resolved. Case B on the agenda, Gerald Coleman Smith, Jr., Pops Ferry Road Lot Three. This, this one has been somewhat cleaned up. Uh, there were a number of vehicles on the lot that had been removed, however, there is one that remains, and it's this one. And it's, uh, an RV, it's inoperable. And that's what's left.
Alright, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the property located at eighteen-ninety-one Pops Ferry Road Lot Three? Sir, if you've come up to the front, speaking through the microphone, state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Brandon Coleman, my address is eighteen-ninety-one Pops Ferry Road Lot Three. I have been living there the past few months, but planning on moving back in there, I've been trying my hardest to clean the place up and make it look presentable. I still have this RV there, the smaller, I did push it forward where it's even with my trailer, doesn't stand out as much. I plan on getting rid of it soon, it's just, it'll tear my little hind up towing that thing with it. So.
How much time do you need to be in compliance?
Thirty days, thirty to sixty days would be plenty. I get a paycheck, I could rent a U-Haul truck, tow it with something like that. It's just, I'm just getting back to my property, I'm just in a, I'm in the process of taking over, it's in my father's name, my father's deceased now, so it's been left to me.
I'll make a motion to give him sixty days.
Alright.
I'll second.
Alright, we, we have a motion to give you, uh, sixty days, and it's been seconded it, all in favor? Opposed? Motion granted. You got sixty days. Alright, so you, you know the conditions there, if you just work with our, uh, code enforcement officials, and you got sixty days to make some improvements.
Okay, just move RV?
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Demming? I'll second it, or no?
I'll second it.
Mr. Gines seconded.
Brandon, B-R-A-N-D-O-N.
Think Mr. Creel had a comment or two.
My name is Philly Erton, my wife and I have lived on Lot Four.
Sir, sir, can I ask, take a seat and speak to the microphone so it can be recorded?
My wife and I have lived on Lot Four, right beside, uh, Lot Three, for the last twenty-five years, and since Brandon Coleman has lived there. Okay, when, since Brandon Coleman moved in there, first of all, it was his grandmother bought the home. Then she got ill and, and gave it to her son, and she went to nursing home and she passed away. Uh, Mr. Coleman, with the cases about, I let his son move in that trailer and live there. But he was so irresponsible, he finally had to charge him rent, because he wouldn't take care of the property, he literally trashed the property. He became a junk man. He bought four boats, one twenty-seven foot, one fifteen, and a couple of small ones. He bought, he had five cars, two wrecked, and he didn't have the right proper registration on them. He literally trashed that property, literally trashed that property. He terrorized the neighborhood, he'd come in the middle of midnight with a truckload of junk, and literally throw it on the ground and trash it. That's not the problem right now. Code has got on him, he's cleaned the property up, he got rid of the boats, he got rid of the cars, and he only has one car in that trailer. The problem now is, when Katrina hit, it tore the roof off that trailer. And the whole section of the trailer was tore off, and for two weeks it rained in that trailer. It literally soaked the interior. Finally, we all got it covered, and his grandmother couldn't afford to have it repaired, so she waited until a church group came, they replaced the roof, but they did not replace the insulation inside. So that insulation has been in there rotting, and that place has got so much mold in it, it's not fit to live in. And I'm requesting that the city approve the removal of that trailer or the destruction of that trailer, because it's not fit for human people.
Sir, we're only considering what code enforcement has brought before us today. Uh, the city council recognizes your, your testimony certainly, and that of the owner. Uh, he has sixty days to make the necessary improvements, and then we'll, uh, consider,
My recommendation is that we have the city inspectors go in and inspect that trailer and make sure it's, it's, uh, electrical and plumbing sound for someone to live in. I don't believe it is.
Okay, that's not a, a question today at this hearing? That isn't, uh, the question today? Okay? If that becomes an issue, the council will, uh, consider it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Creel, any other comments?
Not on this one, no.
Okay, we'll consider this case clo- uh, closed.
Okay. Case C on the agenda, Extended Stay LLC, five-ninety Beach Boulevard, this case is still in violation.
No, sir. We, we've moved on to the next case.
Okay, that's all I have on this one. That's it on this case.
That's it. Anyone, uh, here to speak on behalf of five-ninety Beach Boulevard? There being no one, this case is closed.
Case D on the agenda, Andre A. and Sabrina L. Enriquez, four-ninety-four Channel Mark Drive. We would ask for a thirty-day extension on this, the, uh, the bank has actually taken control of this, and they've made us aware that they're gonna be repairing the, uh,
Make that motion. I'll second, third, what, thirty days?
Which, um, which property is that on Channel Mark? Is that the, the house that's under construction and has been for a while?
No, sir, no, sir.
That's, that's not?
Actually, when you look at this one from the outside, it doesn't look that bad. The problem is, is that the fence, uh, sections of the fence are falling in, and there's a swimming pool in the backyard. And so, we're just trying to, uh, get the fence back to where it would, uh, prevent a child from getting into the swimming pool area.
Okay, so, uh, is any?
We have a, we have a motion to second for the thirty-day request. Uh, Mr. Gines seconded it.
Has there been anyone to speak?
Not on this one, no. The, uh, the bank has notified us that this is, uh, is in foreclosure, and that they're taking steps to correct it.
I'll still ask a question, if there's anybody here to represent four-ninety-four Channel Mark Drive? Okay, there's no one, we do have a motion to second for thirty days, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
I, item, item E on the agenda, Alfred R. Covall Senior Estate, care of Mark Covall, three-seventeen West Drive, that case has been resolved. Item F on the agenda, NBN Foods, twenty-five-eighteen Marshall Road, this case is still in violation.
This, this is Marshall Road that's in Edgewater Park?
It is, yes, sir.
Trying to think where that is on Marshall Road, Jerry?
It's at the end, it's, uh, it's,
Oh, I know exactly where it is, that's right, that's what I'd spoken with you about earlier, that's on the old Lee property or the Breakers property, is how folks would remember, that's that house that's kind of set back away from,
Yes, sir.
I got you.
And the, uh, the, the issue with this one, we've had this in civil court, the issue with this one is that there are all the appearances, that they're running some type of a repair operation, a vehicle repair operation there, uh, although the vehicles are in the names of one of the owners, um, you can see that there are a number of vehicles in this residential area.
Did you get any response from them or?
Oh, yes, he's, I think he may be here today. Yes, he's here, he's here today.
Alright, um, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this property located at twenty-five-eighteen Marshall Road? Come up, sir, state your name, address for the record. If you can sign in on the document on the table, please?
Here?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Go ahead, sir, you speak when you're ready.
Me or you?
You.
Sir, I mean, are you taking me to court, this is my, my daughter's property, she lived there alone, and, yeah, my daughter, she lived there, and he called me a couple, twice, go to court, I went there last time, he said, well, he put a lot, uh, a lot of vacation, I mean, the grass and the swimming pool, and it, and when I go there, I show him, nobody there, and we have fence everywhere. And he said last time, okay, I don't care about this, I want, show me all title, this is your vehicle, your daughter's name. I went there, and I show him all title, I saw all of them here, all title our name. And nobody, this road is the end of road, and we have fence, yes, maybe have a couple of picture here and there, we forgot one day, but not always like this. I already took care last time, every picture he give me, I show to him, already I told him I clean it, and I put X on it, and I showed it. Now he bring me another picture. I mean, we tried there, because in there, we make almost sixteen hundred a month there, because in the bag, for my daughter's safe, we have fence, nobody go in it. If you go to knock his door to me, you see, uh, break everywhere, look like factory makers break, and nobody say nothing, almost one year there. If you look my, my house, this better, you know, all this car he show him, all of them on the carport, and fence, and nobody walk there, and nobody drive there. But he came in before his employee, I mean, he worked hours, you know, like me, and even he told me, oh, when he ship you to your country, you don't need to be here. And I, I deal with him many time, for another property for Mr. Jimmy, and even he put Mr. Jimmy is bad situation, the guy old eighty-eight, eighty-eight years old, he don't give a mercy, no nothing. He come and hold everything he have, but the guy, he cannot walk. And I live there this time beside Mr. Jimmy. From this time, his, his name Tim, he don't like me at all. And I was, he talking to something, I don't like talking in front of them people, but I don't care about this, if he give me time, I'm go move from there. I'm go to the desert or find me somewhere in the country. Because these people keep on, keep on, keep on. He said the grass high, I never leave my grass, if I show you the picture, he said the grass is a twelve-inch. All the picture I show him, well, show me the, the grass is a twelve-inch. I cut my grass, lawnmower he cut, I have three lawnmower, because one time back up, you know, one time broke, I do this. He say you operate business, I'm never operate business, I'm have heart attack four times. And I work nighttime sometime, I help somebody nighttime, I don't have, uh, operate, but my daughter, my son, he like four-by-four, if you like the picture, all of them are four-by-four truck and this, all of them are, we no sell car, we no buy, I mean, this are vehicle, all toys. And he go behind the, the, behind the, the house, even block, you know, I mean, nobody walk there. We have little tools, lawnmower, I mean, tools and stuff, we no, we no fix any car there, we not do anything there. I mean, I don't care, I mean, if you give me six, a couple of days, or what do you want, I'm go. I mean, I don't care, I mean, if you give me six, a couple of days or what do you want, I'm go get out of there. Because you cannot deal with this people, I mean...
Yes. Mr. Creel, what exactly are the code violations here? Is it the, the fence and the pool, or cutting the grass, or the vehicles in front of or behind the house? Okay, and sir, I'm sorry, I did not hear your name.
My name Jamal Awad, sir. I, I show you the picture, I'm not repair, I don't have time to repair, sir. I work nighttime, nighttime sometime, I know I repair, the swimming pool, I empty the water. And Tim, he told me, oh, why you do this, only take the leather, what the makes sense?
Okay.
Take the leather from swimming pool, even no have, no have water on it, I take it all.
Okay, so to correct these, these violations that have you here today, how, how long, how much time would you need?
Except you guys, I mean, I don't think, but I don't, I don't need deal with them, I'm go move from there.
Okay.
I just thought, I swear, I'm try buy this house, but I'm, I'm go move.
Yes, sir.
I don't want live in Baloxia at all.
Would thirty days give you enough time to do what you...
It's fine, sir, no problem.
Okay.
I thought...
I'd move for a thirty day extension.
Motion for thirty days?
I'll, I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Guines, any other discussion? All in favor of the thirty days? All right, sir, you have thirty days to cure the problem, make whatever decision you need to make.
Thanks, sir.
Item G on the agenda, Michael Schuler, one twenty-one Pine Grove Avenue, this property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Michael Schuler, one twenty-one Pine Grove Avenue? There being none, this case is closed.
Item H on the agenda, Joe Love Thornton, one twenty-two Bellman Street, this property is still in violation. That's all.
Okay. Anyone here on behalf of Joe Love Thornton, one twenty-two Bellman Street? There being no one, this case is closed.
Well, that's a question. Hey, Jerry, who'd you, who'd you get in touch with, anybody?
Um, it shows that the, uh, the card was signed, the certified letter that was sent, was signed and returned. I can tell you who signed the card, if you wanna, if you wanna know that, that'll be in the file. It was signed by Allison Welch.
And what did it do, did she say?
Uh, nothing. I mean, no, no response, just that, uh, we know that they were served.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Code enforcement hearings are now closed. Need a motion for the routine agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Guines?
I'm, I'm good.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. Rhodey? Come up and give us some big news. Anything else? I want to ask you one more question, since you're standing on, you were in here earlier. Is there some reason Graham hasn't been finished? So until you've finished Benaki, then that's...
Thank you. All right, anyone else have any comments on the routine agenda? There being none, all in favor? Those opposed? Uh, before going to executive session, I'd, uh, like to make a motion for the council to consider, uh, allowing the vice president to sign, uh, any documents, ordinances, and resolutions. Uh, as I will be out of town until Thursday. Uh, so if I could have a second?
I'll make that second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion? Mr. Vice President, you're gonna be here? Okay?
It's not a problem, it's not a problem of doing it, that's fine with me.
All opposed? Uh, I don't know if we need it, but we'll go ahead and put it in for the record. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion, uh, for the council go into closed session for the purpose of examining the necessity to go into executive session to discuss, uh, the prospective purchasing and/or discuss leasing of property and the negoti- uh, negotiations regarding expansion of a business or industry. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll bite, I'll make that motion, I'm interested to see what it is.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale. Seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six one? Uh, also need a motion for the council to reconvene in an open meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six one? Uh, will now, uh, consider a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Mayor? Council? Do we need Mike?
Hey, Kenny, um, just, just for the record, I'm recusing myself on this vote to go to executive session.
Okay. Let the record note that Mr. Barrett is recusing himself on the vote to go into executive session.